Okay, I call this meeting to order. Before we move ahead, there's just a couple of things I'd like to bring to the table. One is, I have to get your opinions. What did you think of last night's get together?
It was fun.
It was beautiful.
Yeah, it was really about the weather.
It was really nice, perfect weather. But I love with the number of kids. Because that's what it's all about.
Yeah, I think we're just starting the stepping stones of building great events in this community.
I would have to agree, absolutely. Well, I was thankful to be there and everybody had a great time. You really have to thank the committee and volunteer firefighters who were there on hand for us. It's great when we come together like that. The other thing I wanted to mention is calling a special meeting will not become a habit. The reason why I decided to call this meeting is because I felt a little anxious. You know, we have a new elected council here. I assume that you would be a little anxious to get moving, but more so, we're falling behind. And when I say fallen behind, we're missing opportunity for training, which is something that we should be getting started with and continuing to be aggressive with it. And I thought we'd bring, that's more or less the main aspect of this evening's meeting, is where are we going, what direction, what are we going to decide on for training? Because there's a lot out there. I will be entertaining some information that I received last minute. I was in a meeting with our CEO and I just thought I'd give the clerk a call from the city of Sioux State Marie. And she gave me some really good news, which I'll share with you if you want to get that either. Okay?
Would that be Rachel Tuzinski, the senior clerk?
Yes, it is.
The old CAO here.
Yes. Okay, so.
So we have a resolution to approve the agenda, Resolution 22-222, moved by Counselor Mick, seconded by Counselor Weir. It is all that this council approves the agenda of December 6th, 222 special meetings presented, and any addendum as presented.
May I move over?
Mr. Mayor, from you through to Andrew, I just want approval of the agenda. On the agenda, I didn't see the emergency planner. I didn't see it put on there. It's, I believe, a thing that has to be ASAP. And I thought that it would be on there.
It is 13C.
13C it is.
On the second page.
So it is 13C. So moving it is.
I'll move it. I'm sorry, I didn't see the other side of the page. Thanks, Counselor Mick.
Okay, disclosure of temporary interests? None? Okay, minutes of previous meeting? None? Questions and information arising out of the minutes? Okay. Moving on to number six, petitions and/or delegations? None. Staff reports, none at this point. Planning, none at this point. Bylaws, none at this point. Notice and notice of motions, none at this point. Correspondence, none at this point. Minutes of boards and committees, none at this point. And new business? Yes, let's start with A. New council training options. This is huge for us. Just like I said, is the main reason why I brought us together today, because there are dates we've already missed for training and there are dates that are coming up in the next short while into January and following months. And I just thought it'd be important and smart for us to get together and decide what direction. I think, don't be afraid of some of the numbers you're going to see there. What Andrew did for us here was I asked him to accumulate whatever he can find for us to decide what direction we want to go in. And again, this is the area. I might as well start by saying, I'm going to share this with you. And sorry, it's last minute, but I just got off the phone with her earlier today, getting permission to share this information. I always like getting permission before I. So if you want to have a quick view with that. I'm going to just give them a couple minutes to look at that. So when we're looking at this information, starting off by looking at the EMO online training, we can see that training started November the 25th and runs to December the 7th, 16th, 19th. So considering how close we are to those dates, is the main reason why I thought we'd get together today this evening to decide what direction we'd like to go in.
It looks like the first set are for mayor's reassignment chairs and the second set is for the counselors.
Right.
Is the online training, maybe you don't know this, is the online training available? On that date, is there set hours for that? Or can you log into it on that day?
At a different time?
At a different time?
That, I'm not sure.
It doesn't say here. I know that, I'll take it away and get back to everybody, but most of the EMO courses are offered jury business hours, my understanding. We can request potentially to have them at different hours, but most of them appear to be Monday to Friday, between, you know, nine and five kind of a thing. But I'll certainly reach out with regards to this one specifically to see if they are offering anything else. From what I've been able to determine so far, it seems that most of that stuff is definitely geared business hours.
Are they live training sessions?
That's my understanding, it's a virtual session that they would have. So whether it's Zoom or one of those things.
It's interesting, sorry, I just read up here. All in-class courses can also be offered as customized in-house sessions. This is on the last page? For individual councils and municipal staff. And then there's contact information. So that's right on. Does this have anything to do with the training we're getting in, layered, is it?
No, that's, I mean, it may cover some of the same topics, but that's going to be done, delivered by the ministry.
So we want to stay away from covering the same topics.
Right.
So that being said, I mean, what are your thoughts? I mean, we have items one through five here. You've had a chance to review some information. The key element behind Rachel's training, and I was thrilled when I called her today and had a discussion with her. She's willing, the training that she's able to provide us, she's willing to do at zero cost. Because she's a.
I second that, Mr. Mayor. I'm not paying $2,000 to sit in the room with you hours.
Yeah.
Personally, it's my opinion.
Yeah, well, that's fine. I mean, it's about whatever we decide. I'm not dictating in terms of what we are to take. It's whatever you want to take.
Yeah.
Just my opinion, I think it's a little pricey personally. And there's also Jake teaches stuff, social media, and it's like $68 a person. And it's four hours. And you can either have it virtually or in line, but we'd have to reach out and talk. But it's nice that you reached out. It's a good package. There's an outline of what we need to be trained on. That would be great too.
From?
From Rachel.
Yeah, it's in your package that I gave you.
So how soon can she provide the training?
That I said, we would discuss after this evening's meeting to see that we were going to utilize her services. And if we're in agreement with it, we'll reach out to her and then we'll have to put some kind of a plan together. Which I think is fantastic.
Absolutely.
So today is the first day I didn't bring my package, Mr. Mayor, through you to the rest of the council. And I got given a binder with information of role, description, policies, code of conduct.
Yes.
And that was basically my training from when I started. And it has a lot, a lot of information in it. And I refer to it like loosely, right?
Those binders you will be receiving.
Seeing, yeah.
You will be receiving these binders, okay? With all that information for you. And I believe it'll be ready for, well, you'll probably get it before the 13th, I would hope, for our next meeting. And that was the other thing that I forgot to mention, please, sorry, I'm a little bit off topic here. The other reason why I decided to call this evening's meeting was because we seem to be having many people wanting to come to our December 13th celebratory meeting. And, you know, considering we'll be speaking, each one of us, I just thought it'd be nice to have it a celebration and leave it as a celebration. And we've put some invites out there. We've invited, not, you know, it was a last-minute decision. This is all new for me, so nevertheless, we put out invitations to city of Sioux State Marie, mayor, council, chief of police, chief sayers. And am I missing anyone? There's five all together. Yes.
Did you get Sayers, did you get Rickard? He's the two chiefs, Rickard and Sayers. And by that time, hopefully, we'll have the land acknowledgement that we opened meetings with from now on that I proposed live here.
Yeah, well, I'm starting each one of our meetings after this evening with the land acknowledgement. I will, and I apologize, I should have done that this evening. I should have.
I do it many times throughout the day, so, yeah.
And I thought maybe if council is interested, I have no issues if we all want to take a turn at each meeting. Showing the respect level we have. But that would be up to us. But I apologize for that. I will do that with our upcoming meetings.
I have, I do it for the right sequence and I have a great land acknowledgement. I can bring it in for, and go over if you wanted to go over it. I have a copy, again, it's in my bag, but I bring it everywhere I go.
Yeah, no, we can have a look at it. Andrew and I have dug out some information as well, but sure, you know, whatever you have. You mentioned there's two chiefs.
Chief Rickard and Chief Sayers, yes.
So.
Garden and Bash, there's two.
Yeah, no, no, okay, I understand that. But from the research that I gathered, Prince Township is tied to the Bajuwana First Nations. Our lands are tied to the Bajuwana First Nations.
Have we received any acknowledgements to invitations?
Yeah, we've received a few of them, you know. We've also invited, sorry, that I recall, our MPP and NPP. We've heard back Ross Romano, he's not available, he's in Toronto that day. We haven't heard back from Terry Sheen yet. We have not heard back from Chief Sayers, nor the chief, police chief, nor the mayor yet, or the council of Sioux State Marie. And Michael Matthews as well. Turn, Michael Matthew, Michael Matthew, Mike Matthew as well. We've been playing a lot of phone tag. I finally got through to his administrator today and he'll fill us in in terms of whether he'll be able to make it or not. So I just thought it'd be appropriate and professional to invite, you know, our ties to our community. And the invitation in itself means a lot. So thank you for asking. So back to our training. What have we decided, what direction do we want to go in? I'm good with whatever direction council would like to take.
I like the Rachel training. In all honesty, I like the impact training.
Impact is very important, very important.
I like the layered training, yes. Mostly because it will give us an opportunity to let our other communities know who we are and introduce ourselves to some people.
Sure.
Liaise, if we get the chance. If the AMTO training is the same as Rachel's, I feel like we can probably split it.
Absolutely, like I said, some of this we may not have put in there if I would have thought of getting the role of Rachel.
For sure, for sure.
It was just the last thing last Friday.
No, it's good to keep those.
It's the ties.
Those are just my options, but that's what I'm thinking.
So what do you think of the media training? I know our previous council received that training and they thought it was awesome.
Yeah. The only reason I'm not commenting on it is because I've had it, because I used to work with three, so.
Oh, okay, so that's good, that's good.
I've engaged with that, so if we do it, I will of course attend.
Well, what are your thoughts on it?
Like I say, I'm very media trained through my day job, so.
Yeah.
I mean, any learning is not bad learning. So obviously, I would be up for it. And if it's something everybody else feels they need, 100%, but that's just my experience. I would certainly welcome it, Mayor.
Okay. What do you think, Hich?
What's going on with Wishart E4M training over three years? What's that?
Well, that's a package that they provide for us. They provide for any municipality. You don't have to take the whole package. You can pick and choose what you want to dig into, what you want to learn.
That one scared me a bit because it's.
Oh, yeah.
Fast, which is good.
Yeah.
But it's a good question, Eugene, because my question is, are we a member now? Because there's member prices, there's non-member prices.
And why E4M? Are we still attached to them in some way or something? Or are we not done with them?
It's not being attached. They are the only service that we have that can provide the services that they offer other than us reaching out to Southern Ontario. Okay, so the closest on hand in terms of the wide variety of anything dealing with the municipal act, really.
For sure, for sure. I mean, it's nice to have that resource, right?
Absolutely.
Close to us.
Absolutely. And they're always open to negotiation too. But I'm not saying we have to take their training. It has to be brought to the table because they offer the.
Are they an integrity commissioner?
No.
They're not?
No. No, when they, it's not tricky, but I've learned this through the process over the last year. They are not an integrity commissioner. They reach out to integrity commissioners to look into matters that they may have to deal with. Okay?
Yeah, makes sense.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
I mean, we've had to use E4M for a variety of reasons. They've actually been very helpful with us in terms of streaming us through a process that we were faced with last year. I believe without their direction, honestly, it would have been very confusing for us. Very confusing. Because we're not trained in that area, we're not professionals in that area. And I wasn't going to pretend to, that's for sure.
For sure.
So I'm not suggesting that we have to take their training or all their training. I'm just stating the fact that they provide valuable resources to our community, to our council, when need be.
Is there, so, I'm sure you don't know the answer, but is, if we take the Rachel training, and I'm sure that's going to give us a good overview.
Absolutely.
Is there things that they may be able to offset that she might not have or can we pick and choose? Do we know?
Well, yeah, no, we can pick and choose. We don't have, correct me if I'm wrong, Andrew?
Yep, there are pricing. The way they did it is they gave a one, like a grand total price with a discount if you take the whole package and purchase it, you know, at a certain, by a certain date. I believe it was the 31st of January. However, you also can do, I guess, à la cartes version if you want just certain areas of it.
Right.
And then they have a price on the item list of what each of those items would cost. So there is that option. And, you know, we can always ask, you know, if there's other groups that are doing it. Maybe there's a discount or something if there's other groups that are taking it for those particular sessions. Can't guarantee that, but we can always ask. But, you know, there is pricing in there that shows, granted, we want everything or if you wanted just certain areas.
I'm comfortable with what Counselor Mick has pointed out to us with the training that she thought was good for council. The only one that I thought, because I haven't had this training, I'd certainly like to have this training and that's the number two issue. Talking media and again, through what I've learned over the last few years, it's not that it's tricky, we just have to learn the ins and outs and what's right and what's wrong and where we have to be careful and what we say and how we say it. And shouldn't say anything at all.
Yeah, like I say, any learning is not bad learning. So absolutely, if the team feels they need it, I'm coming.
What are your thoughts, Counselor Pluto?
I'm just looking at all the interactive training and what it pertains to and how it is. And again, that binder will, at a cost of us 25 cents a page, will suffice in my eyes. Yes, there are some that I would like to be trained on. I think everyone should go to financial, the financial training, which will help us with the budget and to work with budgets, especially with the, and this is not a slur, but it's a green council where all, and I can root myself in this, because 12 months does not designate me as a professional. I've learned a lot, yes, but there's the financial reporting and assessment management, the fiscal responsibilities and realities of municipalities, and also how to become as individuals counselors, how to differentiate the staff of the municipality and/or the council and what the role differences are is key. Yes, we do what we have to do and that there's an outline as to what a council responsibility is. And then there's administration office staff who all answer to a CAO and they are run and ruled by that person. So we're going to start, hopefully in the new year, with the way that the direction of the municipality has gone. Where we're talking to constituents and door knocking and finding that we are going forward, going to be a transparent, open and resident municipality. Whereas we serve them, they put us here. So. I'm a knowledge is power. I'm always, I'm 68 and I still want to learn, so.
Absolutely. One thing that I found with the binders, Counselor Pluto is correct, it's all there for us. What I've, my experience has taught me that sometimes we'll read the lingo in different ways. With the training, it separates that lingo and brings us into the same path. But the binders are awesome.
Oh, yeah. I'd rather read my binder than listen to someone tell me things and then give me six for instances and kill 40 minutes of his presentation. That's why I'm not, I'm old school.
I'd rather have a discussion with someone. Not always. I like the binder as a reference point, but it's nice to hear someone's experiences.
Yep. If there was something I didn't understand, that was called the mayor. If it's something I didn't understand, that was called the CAO. And I went through that and I would have to do it a couple of times on each. But I've called 20 different occasions, few in charge, and I've called 10 who's in charge.
Right.
Understanding a certain part of the municipal act, so, yeah.
The other avenue that I'll bring to your attention is you have an open line to Ministry of Affairs in Sudbury. Whenever you're questioning something, whatever it may be, you'll have a designated individual that you will be able to communicate with to get clarification on whatever it is you need clarification with. For example, we will be dealing sometime in the far future with the official plan, which is huge, strategic planning. I know there are issues in the past where we've had to deal with conflict of interest issues. I've reached out and received my direction through them. And it's a protection for us. That's what I found. They are the ones that have the answers. And I would strongly recommend using them. They don't mind the call. That's what they're there for. And usually what I did was had everything documented via email. So that, you know, they directed me, I followed the directions that could come back on me. Well, here's the email. Documentation is huge, very, very important.
Just add that the training is actually going to be put on by the ministry. So there will be, I don't know 100% who is going to be doing it yet, but there will be contacts from ministry there in order to, you know, help us as we move forward.
So how would you like to move forward in terms of what training we are going to agree in establishing? Because what I'd like to try and do is establish something where it's continuous, not just for the next month or two, we get this training and then we're on our own. If we can, I'd like to train, get our training or evolve our training over a long period of time. If it's, if we can materialize it. If we can materialize it, well, so be it. But right now, this is what we have to deal with. But I don't look at this as being our final training. Whatever comes up in the future, I'd like to move forward.
Yeah, I agree.
So where do you want to go from here? What training are we going to move forward with at this time? Because right now, we've checked off the Laird. I'm not sure about the summit right now, I put it out there. Impact training for sure, very important. We have a new representative for Impact for our township. And definitely Rachel's training. So we're good with that. Are we going with number two, some of the council training, media training?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay.
That's the pastor crawling one?
Yes.
I'll agree with that.
Okay, and then we have Rachel. Rachel outlines some EMO training, right?
Yeah.
Yes. So the EMO training, what, is there anything we're going with there? Or are we just leaving that off the table right now? Maybe we have specific dates? Oh, sorry, we have to look into the times. Correct me if I'm wrong?
Yeah, yeah. For myself right now, we're down in staff, so if I can have time to book in advance, then they can make arrangements for me to be absent.
Yes, I respect the fact that we have a table of faculty that are employed. So it's something we all have to take into consideration. And one of the things that was brought to my attention. And, uh, one of the things that was brought to my attention, and I have, you know, it's totally fair that I bring it to council's attention, and that is, let's take, for example, uh, next Wednesday, we have training and training that we must take, uh, but yet, uh, one of us has to take a day off work. Okay, now first of all, I can't expect you but if you're prepared to take that day off work, is it something that, uh, I, which I doubt, but I have to put it out there, is it something that can be covered through your employer's, through some type of uh, uh, labor agreement, or is it something that the township would have to pay you for that day? You can't be expected to be in training, missing work, and not going to be. And that's only if training is absolutely necessary. Of importance.
Listen, Mayor, through you, to the rest of council, I will not miss work to take training. I'm sorry, unless I'm compensated at the rate of pay that I make, my paycheck is first and foremost.
And that's what I'm putting out there.
And I also told last council, the second Wednesdays of every month, I am unavailable. I have my union business and my union job that I do, and I have my union meetings monthly. And we worked around that and it worked out pretty good.
So that was a hypothetical day.
Oh, no, I was just, because it's a big day.
This is not something we're going to run into monthly. It's just when it comes to time that something comes up with council. It's not my decision to say that this is how it's going to be. I'm asking council. You may have to come up with a resolution on that, I'm not sure. Maybe during our next meeting, but it's something we've thought.
So my employer has let me know that, um, if at all possible, especially from meetings upcoming, if they, uh, are doing business hours and I can do them through Zoom, then I'm still in the office and able to answer questions, so that, that is an option for me as well, too.
I've put this out on the table, to be fair with council, just so we have it out there. If that circumstances stands arises, at least we know it's out there and we'll have to decide what direction we'll take at that time. It's about being fair at the end of the day. I will not come to this table saying this is how it's going to be. Or, it will not happen. So, just for clarification, we are going ahead with, uh, item 13, we are going ahead with, uh, A1, 2, 4, and, and Rachel. And that's all the training we're moving forward with at this, at this time?
I'm good with that.
Okay, that's good.
Do you want resolutions?
Yes, we have to.
Okay, so, Resolution 222-223, be resolved with, sorry, moved by Counselor Mick, seconded by Counselor Weir. Be resolved with this council approves the Ministry of Municipal Affairs Housing Training at the Laird Town Hall for Council and Municipal Administration.
Moved by. Melanie and seconded by Jane, I'll try yours.
Resolution 222-224, moved by Counselor Weir, seconded by Counselor Caputo. Be resolved with council approves the Summit New Council Media Training for Council and Municipal Administration.
Okay, all in agreement?
So we'll just go read this one through for the A M C T O one?
Yes.
So Resolution 222-225, moved by Counselor Weir, seconded by Counselor Caputo. Be resolved with council approves the A C T O H C session during council during the day for council minister and municipal administrator. And then this is the one that we.
So this is where all in favor and no one would raise their hands? I know you don't. I just, I gotta put it out there. No, Jane had question like went to, went to, so wherever I can.
Uh, the next resolution is 222-226, moved by Counselor Mick, seconded by Counselor Weir. Be resolved with the council approves the impact training session for council and municipal administration.
All in favor?
Uh, Resolution 222-227, moved by Counselor Weir, seconded by Counselor Caputo. Be resolved with the council approves the wish to be for any training program over three years.
All in favor? Yes, please. So for Rachel, we'll be reaching out to her this week to get some set dates, and we'll put those dates out there, and obviously, it will have to be, she, I've already asked her if she'd do it through the evening, and she, she agrees. Now, we really, uh, we owe her something.
Yeah.
That's wonderful. She's done that, she's doing that for us. I'm going to City Hall tomorrow to meet with, uh, this population, to meet with, uh, Rachel, uh, Mayor Schumacher separately, and, um, sorry, I forget this gentleman's name.
Malcolm White?
No.
Nope. Is he retired? Is he still?
So we need a mover? Sorry. Here's the motion in regard to, uh, in regard to council training for Rachel, correct?
Yep. Council training provided by Susan Marie Clerk Rachel is a day.
So be resolved that this council agreed to council training provided by Susan Marie Clerk Rachel. So I need a mover? And a seconder? Ready to go?
Yep.
Okay, item, uh, 13, is it? 13B. Out the rink, I'll let Andrew speak on that.
Um, so we have a volunteer, uh, meeting on, uh, this coming Monday, uh, 5 P M to review with, uh, volunteers, uh, the rink, uh, for this winter season. Um, at this point, we have about five, but, um, all the ones that said they were coming told me they were going to bring friends with them, but it didn't get named, but we'll see where that goes. Um, but this is a good start to, to get everything going, especially that's been a bit of a, a milder, uh, November, December, um, so that sort of worked in our favor in terms of, you know, flooding and trying to get any frozen ice on. Um, but, um, you know, the end goal is to, to try and get this rolling as soon as we can, once weather cooperates, and, um, and have volunteers that look after it after us.
I can suggest something about the outdoor rink. I made the, uh, couple of calls to, uh, the arenas, local arenas in Susei Marie. And I asked if they'd be interested in doing some kind of a P V or whatever league, uh, tournament for the young, young fellows, young kids. And they have shown an interest. Uh, nothing's materialized. I was just doing, put my feelers out there to, you know, utilize our rink more through the winter months. Um, and that being said, well, I can't remember the gentleman's name. He offered, I asked what it would take to paint like a center line with the face-off circle and maybe just the goalie lines, goalie lines? Because if we're going to host a kind of tournament, it's, these, these kids play rec, rec coffee and, uh, it'd be nice to have somebody like that. So nevertheless, they offered to do it for free, other than the cost of the material, which be, which would be fifteen hundred, roughly fifteen hundred dollars. Now, I'm not asking that we take it out of our coffers. I was going to suggest that we maybe reach out to, uh, uh, local businesses to see if someone would be willing to sponsor that for us. For the year, maybe put their logo in the center or something. I don't think it's wise. We can reach out on our own merit, if you happen to know of a local business out there. But I think it'd be a lot more professional if, uh, if we drafted a letter out to, to different businesses out there, corporations. What are your thoughts on that?
I agree with that.
Okay.
I would, uh, I would request that media letter be sent to R F Contracting.
R F, okay.
So your girl don't know yet, I'm Italian and, and, uh, in the group, and I'm tight. I'm tight with Italian money. I represent constituents. And I think we can go and look about pricing and such. And, uh, that's all I'll say.
But if we're looking for a sponsor, most of, uh, Council Caputo, um, that, it's not fun coming from the township, but good for the township.
Yeah, so as a kid growing up, you, uh, girls probably weren't around when the Memorial Gardens had a, and a small rink inside the original rink. But I worked as a rink rat for a short term, and it's quite the process of putting lines down. Okay, it's lining, um, I'm sorry, stop. First is layout, then it's lining, and then it's layering. Okay, I did, they do the Mo, Super Memorial Gardens G F L Center in two days. Eight guys. My buddy, Papu, is the manager of the G F L. Um, I can, through Enzo, the mayor, or he can go and see Rob Santa Maria. And I'm sure maybe something can come to a little Prince Township ring where they can give us some paint. I, I have a pretty good persuasive friendship with them. So we can just look at it and then say, no, I just say, let's cross all our Ts and dot all our Is, again, that's all, that's all I'll say.
They're all good thoughts. And one thing that I'd like to keep in mind, like for us to keep in mind, this is where the importance of of, of establishing or building on and maintaining a positive relationship with your neighbors. I look at them as being a mothership, and they provide us with a lot of entities, tons of service, and quite frankly, without that service, it's, I don't know where we'd be today. So my intention as the mayor of our community is I will be working very diligently, building on the reputation with our local, uh, or with our neighboring Susei Marie community. And I look forward to that venture, and I plan on being involved a lot more. I would, I, I'm, I'm not saying only myself. I'm sure there are venues that all of council can be a part of. Uh, but as the time goes on, uh, we'll move forward in the direction, but I just want to make you aware of that.
Cool.
Okay, so, item C. Andrew.
Um, so, it's a request to hire for the new, uh, Community Emergency Management Coordinator, um, as, as we know that, um, our previous one is, uh, has resigned, and we need to replace that, uh, that role. Um, we are all, just for your own knowledge, we're all completed for 2022. Like, everything's done, it's been submitted in terms of, um, requirements for that. Uh, it was actually finished up today, uh, but we, we do need to replace, um, Mr. Gregoire.
So.
Is there a committee for that, or is it just him? Is there like more than him that does stuff for that, or is it just him?
Just him. We had, sorry.
Uh, there's an honorary that goes with the emergency, uh, committee, uh, chair, Bruce. He gets a monthly, uh, honorary. I'm supposed to be with him tomorrow, Thursday or Friday, just when he's available or his wife lets him out. And, uh, just so we can get a heads up, and I don't know if there's a job description for this position. So. So, what are the requirements and responsibilities and are?
Yep, and that's something that once we'll be building, um, because that, the, the challenge, I guess, for us is that other communities, that bigger cities, this is a full-time job.
Right.
Right, same as, you know, most roles. Um, so let's, how do we pare that down? Um, and I had a discussion with, uh, Mr. Gregoire today, and he said, when he originally was in, you know, took on the role, it was advertised to him that it was roughly 12 hours a month. Having said that, with COVID and going through that, he was on the phone every day, um, dealing with, you know, that process as we all managed through the pandemic. So we have to be cognizant of the fact that, you know, while we, we think it may be 12 hours a month, and there are training sessions that, you know, there's going to be training that they need to take, uh, there's training sessions that we need to provide to our emergency management group, um, in conjunction with, you know, the fire department, some from the ministry. So it is, uh, something that we need to look at in terms of, do we have a, uh, an up-to-date job description? Uh, no, but once this posting, uh, is approved, we'll have it out, and because I've, I've got something to compare, and we'll get it out as soon as we can with what we're looking for from this particular role.
We had a company that used to look after this before this, this volunteer position. It is very, it was very expensive. I, I can't remember the cost of it all, but it's not cheap. Um, I'm going to suggest something to council. Mr. Gregoire did not bill the community for the extra hours they put in. It's when the emergency comes up, like COVID-19, that the hours were accumulating. He did not bill us one cent. So I would ask the council, consider that we purchase a gift certificate for dinner somewhere, wherever we decide, for him and his wife. Uh, thanking him for his service to our community, uh, I believe we owe at least that to, to them. And that'll leave up to council to decide, and if we can put a resolution towards that. Your thoughts, Counselor Caputo?
I'm all, I'm good.
Yeah, I gotta be honest with you guys. This, this is one of the most relaxing meetings I've ever had.
Good thing, it's a good start.
Would have been just us, uh, five if I had not told Marguerite, I'll see you tomorrow night. She goes. She had no idea.
Uh.
I can see a lot of other people did neither.
Are we good with a $200 figure?
Yes.
So, be it resolved that this council agreed to purchase, purchase a gift certificate in the amount of $200 for C N C Bruce Gregoire to thank him for his services. Need a mover, please?
I'll move that.
Seconder? And, okay.
Um, so Resolution 2022-229, moved by, uh, Counselor Mick, seconded by Counselor Caputo. Be resolved with council approves hiring of a new Community Emergency Management Coordinator.
All in favor?
Aye.
So this, uh, next item is item E, uh, members of various committees and name, uh, acting mayor. Uh, I, one thing I did, I didn't just, I think you're aware, you're all aware of this.
Sorry, I skipped the.
I skipped the?
Yeah.
Well, sorry. Yeah, skip D. That's important for me. Okay, item B, thank you. Twenty twenty-three Roma Conference in Toronto, Mayor Plumb will request to attend. Roma, the Roma Conference that's offered is a conference where various MPs, important MPs, present uh at different venues. Uh, this will be my first uh, first time ever being involved with something like this at this level. It's a it's a fantastic, I'm not trying to sell this to you. It's something that uh is a necessity for our township, but in the future, what I'd like to be able to do is, and we're talking down the road, once I learn the ropes and turns and twists, I would not mind a member of council being a part of this because the training is impeccable. It really is impeccable. And this being said, I have met with uh, NPP Ross Romano, and he's invited me uh, in the future to spend some time in Toronto with him. Uh, he'll be introducing me to members of of his caucus. Hopefully, uh, it will be a good uh, timing where it will be good timing where I'll be able to meet our uh, Mr. Duckford. And again, this to me is invaluable for our community in terms of creating these these partnerships and and just getting to know people, but more so than getting to know who I am. And who and what and and who and where Prince Township is located, selling our community. Because we have, I believe, we are all going to bring some valuable changes to our community, ideas of changes. And for for those ideas to come through, there's no better way than to create these positive relationships with uh different levels of government, whether it's federal, provincial, or at the local level, uh, considering our neighbors are right next door, so on and so forth.
Shaking hands and kissing babies is a good always to have.
That's what it's all about.
And getting yourself out there is, I think, very admirable, and I'm all for it.
Thank you. Thank you. I really appreciate the support. I'm gonna be honest with you here. I'm gonna speak from my heart. I did not run for mayorship for me. I ran for this position for the people of Prince Township. I am here to serve them, and I want to do the best job that I can to the best of my ability. But I'll be quite honest with you, I cannot do it without your support. It's your support that I'm counting on. One thing that I know I have to be with council is one hundred percent transparent. Nothing that I do, anything that I do, will not be kept behind a closed door. I want it to be open to the community. I want it to be open to council. I think it's very important for us as a team, and it builds a level of trust amongst us. And uh, the bigger team we are, the the bigger goals we can gain. So I thank you for that. I just wanted to share that with you. And if I slip, hey, you know where to find me, right?
You know what? If you slip, we're gonna be there to catch you.
There you go. Exactly. So I will never do anything intentionally, I can tell you that. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
About it. I'm happy that you're gonna go and represent us. Um, it does say member versus non-member. Are we members of Roma?
Yes. Yeah, our community is a member, yeah.
In reading, I I'm for this training as well, too, and um I'm looking forward to getting the feedback on um some of the highlights of this training, especially the rural housing development, um, the blue box transition, um, the data-driven decision-making, and the solutions for rural health.
Yes, so to elaborate on what you just shared with us, we've had a lot on our plates since since the election. It's new to me as a mayor. We have a CEO that's in training. I wasn't able to, we weren't able to book any specific training venues. We were just too late for that. But you're still, there are still venues that you'll be able to be a part of. And the key for me this round really is to get out there and meet people and meet the MVPs. And uh, and then whatever information, anytime I I go on any kind of a conference or any one of us, uh, for that matter, I mean, I'll I'll come back with that, whatever information that that I may gain. Let's share that with you. I look forward to that, actually. And thanks for reminding me, huh? About the item D.
Oh, you're welcome.
Okay.
Uh, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash two three one. Uh, moved by Councilor Mick, seconded by Councilor Caputo. Be resolved with council approves of Mayor Plumb attending Roma Conference in Toronto and approve the council associated with attendance.
All in favor? Okay, I want to item E. Name members of various committees and name acting mayor. So I reached out to each one of our contractors individually. I didn't want, I did not want to dictate what you were going to do. I I I presented it in a way where I asked your permission to put you in those those, the areas of whatever committees that I thought you would be best in. Uh, I did look at uh, like, for example, Jane, you you know, you're you've been a member of the Rec Committee for quite some time, and we had discussed that when we called, when we when we chatted. And I just thought it'd be nice for you to get some experience in another department.
Agreed.
Um, and and this will be for a four-year term. There may be some change in the middle, and if we have to change, we will, but it's for a four-year term. And in terms of uh, naming the acting acting mayor, I did a little bit of research there, and it it more or less should more or less work on a seniority type level. So for this year, it would be, for this year, for this term, it would be a positive. And I have touched base with him on that case. And I was just, I actually thought of this today. Is there such of a thing, and I'd like to look into it if you're not aware, like, if if I'm not available and for some reason, i- is there such of a thing as a second deputy that fit in, sit in? Or no, we would be, we would be, uh, I'm gonna think, you know, one two, no, no, that would be a, we would have a progress.
I don't know, but I can reach out to the ministry.
I'm just curious. Curious, because we don't, we don't necessarily have to cancel a meeting because with one oh, we still have three, three, uh, no, one oh, one here, no, we couldn't, sorry.
To be four.
We can't, we can't, can't do that. Okay, so we're good with that?
And first and foremost, I'd like to thank my uh, Mayor Plumb for calling and talking with me about this. I discussed it with my wife and we went over it, and she said, we we talked, and I said, I'm honored, and I will try my best to fulfill the shoes that you are gonna instill in me, and I'm hoping that I never have to be called upon to back you. And I I think that you'll do a great job, but I will be there to support you and back you, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
So Resolution twenty twenty-two dash two three two, moved by Councilor Mick, seconded by Councilor Weir. Be resolved with Council by adoption, by law, twenty twenty-two dash twenty-seven, being a bylaw to appoint members to committees, boards, and agencies, and appoint deputy mayor for starting, Captain Charlie twenty-three.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and I'll just add to this note. We will be discussing in the near future, uh, new committees being developed. One being Parks and Recreation, which is separate from Social Committee. Uh, another one is an Advisory Committee. And I'm not sure yet, but as we presented to council, we'll be up to council at the end of the day, uh, an Action Committee, and we'll, I'll elaborate on these committees in the very near future. Now I don't, now I'm looking to make sure I don't skip any. So we're on a treasurer report to be to obtain MCU credit card to conduct township business with a twenty K, twenty thousand dollar limit, same as last card. So I'll elaborate a little bit, and then I'll let you take over. When our previous CEO was here, she carried a uh, uh, credit card of the same value. And on that, I know twenty thousand seems like a lot, but depending on what goes on on a particular date, it can be consumed in a heartbeat. So I'll let you go from there.
So the reason I'm asking for this now is because I, when I first started and and was became the treasurer and brought all the paperwork to the council, and it's been challenging, uh, they're having some staff issues there apparently, uh, and it's been an ongoing challenge, I guess I'll use that word, trying to get something authority set up there and moving forward with with a business. And at first, they're like, oh, yeah, no problem, you can do this. And then they come back now, recently said we need a resolution versus just the the bylaw that appointed me the treasurer. Uh, and they wanted to spell exactly what it was and the council, council had signed off on. So that's why we're presenting it now, not, um, if I'd known this in in August or September, I would have done it then, but their verbiage has changed since we've we've gone through this journey of banking together, so that's what we have here.
There, one other, I'll say reasons is because they're having problems with staff, staffing.
Yeah.
So Resolution.
Resolution twenty twenty-two dash two three three, moved by Councilor Caputo, seconded by Councilor Mick. Be resolved with council approves, Prince Township treasurer to obtain credit card for motor racing to conduct township business with twenty thousand dollar limit to replace the same one.
All in favor? Carrie, and thank you. Okay, DSAB Agreement Amendment CWELCC Funding. What does that all stand for?
That's a great call to start.
So that is the Canada-wide early learning childcare program. So basically, with the um introduction of the ten dollar daycare nationally that the government has rolled out, as as those figures filter through everywhere, um, it came from DSAB that there's an increase in the funding which works out to be thirty-four hundred dollars. It's really down to just pieces of how much certain people work, because everyone, not everyone at the Parent Resource Center is in the same role, so only certain people are qualified to get this, these dollars, and that's how much it is for the remainder of the year. Um, so it's just an amendment to the existing agreement.
Resolution.
Uh, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash two three four, moved by Councilor Caputo, seconded by Councilor Weir. Be resolved with council approves of the DSAB amended agreement amendment on the CWELCC funding.
All in favor?
Right.
Sorry, I didn't, we're good, this side, Carrie, and thank you. Okay. Item H, add Councilor E Caputo a signer to Township Accounts. And again, that just comes about with him being uh, Councilor Caputo being Deputy Mayor. Any comments, suggestions? We're all good with that?
Makes sense.
Okay.
Resolution twenty twenty-two dash two three five, moved by Councilor Mick, seconded by Councilor Weir. Be resolved with council approves adding signing authority, Prince Township Parent Child Resource Council, Council Eugene Caputo.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Just in case, the two senators can't sign.
Right.
It happened a couple times in the last year. But Ken, Ken was always here signing.
All right, this one here is important. Everything is important, but. Item I, Township Complaint Process Review. I wanted to review this process mainly because it's important for us to keep track of complaints and concerns. Then furthermore, the community has asked for council and our administration to be one hundred percent transparent. And that being said, I think council should, would expect that our constituents are also one hundred percent transparent. One thing that I will not entertain as mayor of our community, if there is a complaint that comes to this office or through a counselor about me and does not want to disclose who it is, I will not entertain that. And I believe that's only being fair with me, and I believe it would be fair with you as well. If I was to get a complaint about whatever council it may be, or the CEO, if I'm not allowed, and I have experienced this, or not a lot, okay, but where I would be called on a matter regarding some individual, and I would say, okay, may I ask who's, you know, may I present your name, and right away, it's known that I I simply state, I will not discuss this matter. And I don't believe I really have to get into reasoning behind that. It's it's called transparency. And to the best of our ability, I'm gonna do everything in my power as mayor, and I expect council with their powers to 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 enforce and make sure that we are offering that transparency. And I believe this will, in the long run, help keep the waters calm in our community, and that's what I'm looking to to establish. Any comments?
Well, hundred percent. Um, the anonymity clause that doesn't pertain to this. If you're gonna complain, are you gonna raise an awareness about Councilor Mick or something that Andrew did? You gotta come forward, you gotta stand, be proud, put your name on the paper, and then it can be dealt with. Will it be enclosed? Yes. If 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 it's to do with a personal matter, right, things are are done enclosed to discuss. But if you're not gonna put your name on the complaint, then we're not gonna deal with it. It's 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 in in Mayor Plumb's eyes, frivolous, and we won't deal with it. We're here to make sure that the constituency, everything that goes on. We wanna be as open with everybody as possible, and have them have the ability to come to us as well. Okay?
As a constituent.
Yes.
I would be happy if I had a legitimate complaint to say, oh, you're really taking this seriously.
Hundred percent, right on.
Let me fill it all out. It's now on file that I've made this concern, this complaint.
Yes.
And, okay, you're not just, it's not just noise, it's.
Bravo, hundred percent. Thank you very much. It's nice that we can see people out there to actually accept us, because and again, I'm not saying, I'm, listen, we're not talking about the past, that is behind us.
Yes.
We're not gonna refer to that. We're talking about going forward. And then, uh, brings a great point, excuse me, Mayor Enzo, I'm sorry. I apologize. But this here is gonna be in people's eyes and ears, and they're gonna know and see that we mean business. We're not gonna just take care of Peter and shut away Paul. We're we're here for everybody, right?
It it stretches equality. Everybody will know that they are being treated equally, no matter what, and fairly. And this is a standard form that we will be using. And this isn't coming out because of the past. It's coming out because of today. It's what the people have asked. While I, I'm I'm sure they probably mentioned it to yourself as well. I mean, many people ask for that equality and transparency, and personally, I love the idea. I think it's fantastic.
One of my, um, one of the parts of it, I've read, I've read it in detail, and one of the parts that I like the most is the action requested. Please describe in detail what you want to see done. I mean, not every request that they make is going to, obviously going to be completed, but it would have to be passed by council. But I like that we're, you know, we're asking them, how do you want us to handle this?
Right.
What are they looking for?
Exactly. Yes, Jake. Oh, sorry, Council Jake.
That's okay. Where will this form be? Is it going to, will they have to come to the office to request it? Put on the site?
So currently, it's in the office. If it's not on the site, it will be, for sure.
Yep.
Um, I I believe it is, but I can double check that tomorrow and let everybody know.
The process I recommend is, and it's, it it does not have to be a complaint or concern. That's a matter that has to come to council. It can be a complaint or concern that can be handled, that that may be handled through through our administration. It's about handling every. It's about handling every complaint the same. Now, my way of thinking, and it worked for me, I, I'm not telling you to use this system, but if I was called by a constituent for a complaint, uh, I would either have them meet me here, or I would go to their place of residence, and I would fill out this document. I li, I just really appreciated that, that one-on-one, uh, contact.
I work in a unionized, uh, environment, and part of our unionized environment is a collective bargaining agreement, and part of the collective bargaining agreement is a grievance process, where everybody has the right to be heard. Not to be harassed, discriminated against, sexually, or religiously, but this here is, I think, a, a sort of way that if someone has a gripe, and someone has a, a complaint, I almost said grievance again, Mr. Mayor, a complaint, they come to us, we want to know their complaint, we want to deal with it, and we will get back to them. And like you said, Enzo, um, it may be something that the office staff can handle, and it won't have to worry about council, but we'll be on the ready.
And, and then is using the same, correct me if I'm wrong, but administration is using the same format as we are, so we are consistent throughout.
Good word. Consistent, absolutely.
Very consistent. I think this is an awesome idea, and I thank you for being on board. So is there a resolution on that?
Do we?
We should have that.
So. That's just number F, is that number F?
That's the number.
Hi.
Hi.
Aye, 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 okay.
So I'm sorry, I'll just, uh, once, once you're done with this form, this form has to go to the CEO. And if the CEO is not available, it's handed to Leanne. And then we can handle it, or, or, uh, Ben can handle it in a timely manner.
Just a clarification, so it's pretty much any scenario that they come to, it doesn't have to be complete.
Any scenario, I mean, if it's, if it's a penalty, I mean, if it's nothing to really.
I'm just, like, for example, if there's an issue with the road, do you still put this out?
I was, I, no, no, see, you know what this is going to do? I would fill out this form. And be consistent, because what's happened in the past, I'm sorry, it's, it's not anything negative for us in the past, it's to, it's to create a flow, we're gonna create a nice flow where, say, for example, hypothetically, there's, like you just said, something with the road, well now, you know, you make a call to Andrew, Andrew lets, whatever, one of his administrators know, the administrator calls the road superintendent, the road superintendent is busy on the road, this way here, it's all in writing, it's all in paper, here you go.
Right, yeah. I disagree, I just wanted to clarify.
No, no, and I didn't think you'd get to me, but everything we, we, us here is, is, is a communication. And I appreciate it.
May, may I add that, um, the other thing is that with your example for roads.
Yeah.
If we get fifteen complaints about the same road.
True, yeah.
Not that the road supervisor wouldn't already look.
Agreed.
But then we can maybe take a deeper dive and see, is there another underlying problem that's causing a reoccurrence?
Makes sense.
Or did we miss something?
Yeah. Okay, so be resolved that this council agreed to use, uh, registered complaint form as presented. I need a mover? Molly seconded, correct?
You won't believe how many things, people don't want their name on there.
Or I, I believe that, yeah. People are brave when they're anonymous.
Oh, sorry. Yes, it's, it's, uh, something I learned back in the day as a, I forget. Okay, so on to item fourteen, old business, no? And we move into closed session.
Okay, so I'm just gonna stop the camera. Can be loud.
So, Marg, what do you think for our first meeting, how do we do?
I think people could speak up a little bit more, just because I have a recorder going, doesn't mean, uh,
Okay.
I'm, uh, trying to trap anybody, it's just for clarification purposes, and, uh, well, uh, I don't think anybody is going to.
Yes, you have to do that resolution.
Resolution twenty-two-two-two-three-eight, uh, moved by.
Melanie?
By councillor Mick, seconded by.
Oh, sorry.
Councillor.
Jane.
We're, be resolved that council agrees to move out of closed session at eight fifty PM.
Thank you. Okay, so on to this resolution.
Yep.
Be resolved that this council agrees to extend and reengage Peggy Greco's contract to be prepared by E4M to continue with training the municipal administrator and work through backlog of administrative duties. Moved by. Second, I think you put your hand up. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Sorry for talking so much.
It's okay, it's our first one, we have to get it out of the way.
Yeah, there's certain things.
Make sure you wrote everything down so Marg doesn't know.
Yeah.
So is there a resolution for a moment? Be resolved that this council agreed to adjourn.
Turn the meeting, uh, at.
Eight fifty-three.
Eight fifty-three PM.
Okay.
Aye.
Uh, next meeting? December thirteenth, or until the call of chair.
Okay, move by. Second, Jane. Good, thank you, guys.